Good evening. I call this meeting to order at 6:34. We will hold off any further business as I hear selectmen zero from entry.
Hello, sorry I'm late.
That's fine. As a matter of fact, we just started like 10 seconds ago.
Great.
So, I've called the meeting to order at 6:34. Public comment, say none. We'll move on. In correspondence, there's a, just for your information, I didn't know if I'd given it to you before, is the top 10 taxpayers off the 2013 grant list. That's just for your verification. Another thing that's not in the packet is we're going to have an emergency notification system test. So, we have a system where in emergencies, we have all the white page phone numbers of all the residents and we can reverse 911, dial them and let them know what sort of problems they're having. So, we're going to do a test of that system within the next two weeks, just to let everybody know via the television program, but also in case you guys get any phone calls.
But it'll let the people know that it's a test?
It will say test several times. Yeah, as a matter of fact, it starts with, "This is a test of the town of East Granby." It says, "It's a similar emergency notification system," and then several times. Yeah, what was that divorce and will thing back in the 1939? Was it War of the Worlds? Is that what it was? Yeah, we don't want any of that. The first, next piece of correspondence is the treasures report. And then the general government report is passed back. And we're pretty much trending the way we have been the last month. As a matter of fact, we're just, based after the snow has left and we've had a little time, we're starting to get a little bit more adjusted. So, right now, we are at the contingency level. We're not into it like we were before. So, hopefully, the weather and anything that may break cooperates. It waits until July 1st. So, we're on trend at this point. The, let's see, the New England Whitewater Triple Crown Championship is going to be held this Saturday and Sunday from 9 o'clock until 4 o'clock down at the Terrifield Gourds. The East Granby viewing area is the Texas Road. And there won't be through traffic down there. It'll just be for the residents. Anyone that wants to attend, there's shuttle space, shuttle bus, two shuttle buses running from the center shops. And they'll bring people back and forth so that we don't, it's a heavily populated area, so that way we don't overload up with cars. It's worked pretty well the last two years. And we're utilizing the city, the town minibus, but also Zee Parking has volunteered to donate a minibus and a driver to help on Saturday and Sunday. So, we certainly thank Zee Parking. The next item of business or correspondence is a preliminary unvetted discussion point from the fire department. They've given us a 10-year plan and they, per my request, have expanded it to a 20-year capital plan. So, you know, they've got some suggestions in there about station renovations and things like that. That won't be anything. That would be addressed with capital. That would be a building project down the road if we got to that point where the town wanted to do that. Originally, in their feedback, they had said that they weren't looking to replace any apparatus in the first five years. When they started with the reports, they have moved things into 2017, 18. This is a discussion point at this point. Later on, we'll invite the fire department in to talk to us about, you know, their plans and what they would like to do. So, this is a completely unvetted, but nonetheless, a point of discussion, jumping off point.
Well, yeah, there'd be a lot of questions here. There's some big money amounts in there.
Absolutely. And, you know, do we have to, in the 20-year cycle, do we need to replace all of the equipment, you know, and renovations, you know, what extent and scope they need to be? So, as I've said, I'll make it the third time. It's unvetted.
Correct. I know last time you said, you know, they were talking about equipment getting longer and longer. Well, that's usually due to the fact that you have taller buildings. I mean, in our town, we really don't at this point, but we'll have to hear what they say.
The next correspondence is just from the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority talking about, it's called the Green Bank. And it's just talking about what they were able to achieve in 2013. Thought it might be of interest only because of the fact that CPACE is one of their programs and we're a participating member of CPACE. Waiting for a resident, a commercial business to pick.
Utilize it.
To utilize it. Next, next is a, for those that were at the hearing last night, you already got it from Dr. Stemp. He put together a chart on the historical annual budget process and goes all the way back from FY 05, 06 to the current FY with looking at February guidance, March guidance, and then post-public hearing guidance and what eventually is voted on. So, it's some interesting information in there. And he and I had several discussions last week about the differences between the Board of Selectmen slant on the budget and the Board of Education. So, he put a lot of work into this and I included in the package. Good news is we received $5,186 from the Connecticut Resources Recovery Authority. That's for recycling. And it's a combination of June 16th to June 30th, June 16, 2012 to June 30th, 2013. And we, prior to November, we were part of the Mid-Con project that changed to the Connecticut Solid Waste. You have both checks up and it's $5186, which went into revenue.
And this is basically for all the recyclables that we gave them?
Correct. So, it's a $10 ton rebate that they give us.
Right. So, every ton that doesn't go into the dumpster, we save $65 for not going there, plus we get $10. So, it's like $75.
Right, roughly. I mean, it's 61, but close enough. $75. You're right. So, it's cost avoidance. And it's, and I know in our household, we, you know, we seem to, you know, be more sensitive as the town is because you can see with the numbers that the recycling goes up about, okay, if we take this out of the waste stream and we take that out of the waste stream, and like John says, you know, we save the town $75 a ton by doing that.
Right, right. I mean, I don't know what we can do more to publicize that. I think most of the people are aware of it, but I don't know if people put it on the flyer and let's talk.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Because they do mention an awful lot of additional items, like certain plastics and all that.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we were getting some questions from people at the RCC. So, we made a nice laminated chart of all the different things that were available that you can. The next correspondence is a copy of a letter that was sent to State Senator Beth Bye, by the Farmington Town Manager Kathy Egan regarding MDC non-member town water rates. And she did a comparison. There was a letter from an attorney that precipitated her letter back. It was the MDC's view of the water rates. So, she just went back and used Farmington as an example with, you know, where it's, if there's, the water use is 110.82 CCF of water use. Cost a Farmington resident $900. And so, with all the fees, and it costs a member town $438. Ours wasn't quite as dramatic as that, but it was still huge compared to that. And so, anyways, she goes on to just list some of the things that she thinks needs to happen, of which we've also done the same thing regarding, you know, let's get non-member town to be represented on the MDC board. I know there was some legislation that was looking at that. I'm not sure what the status of that is. I'll have an update next time. The, for the second year in a row, we're participating in the National Donate Life Month in April. And I just gave you a copy of the press release. I've publicized it in a couple of different periodicals. And the flag outside has the American flag, state flag, and the Donate Life flag, just to create a little awareness on donating different organs and everything, you know, that are helpful to folks that are still, still here. So, they say that over 121,000 people in America are waiting for a transplant and 1,400 in Connecticut alone. So, again, that's an awareness thing. The Southfield Development Activities Report is the first one. Actually, what I did is off the last Bradley Developments Zone meeting, I gave you a copy of the activity reports from all four towns regarding economic development and projects. Just thought you might find it interesting.
One thing I noticed, the Passport Restaurant was sold, you know, in Windsor Locks. See, it was acquired by John Barberino.
Yeah.
Auto sales use. I mean, is he, he's not planning on closing down the restaurant, as far as we know, is he?
I think he is.
He is? Oh, yeah?
I don't, I don't have any insight on that, but it's not like town does.
Yeah, I heard things he wants to open a car poised area.
Oh, yeah.
Well, he owns the, he owns the auction. He's got a place at Windsor Locks now that he repairs cars.
Okay.
He wants to have a place more open.
Where is the Passport?
It's right on 75.
And it's, and it's not the building next to the old auto auction. It's, you know, there used to be a restaurant. It's a real restaurant?
Yeah, it's a real restaurant. It's been around for a long time.
How come I don't know that?
It's a pretty nice restaurant.
Kind of news to me.
I gave you a synopsis of the notes that I, somewhere on, where are they? Resident request to rename Memorial Drive. So, I gave you a copy of my notes. I met with Tom Moran, who's very active in veterans group. As a matter of fact, they've informally gotten in together, a group where a couple of times a month, they meet and there's 15 to 20 of the vets that get together.
Or in a G.O.S.
Yeah, and they, they hang out and have camaraderie and good things. Anyways, so, Tom, on behalf of that veterans group, is asking the Board of Selectmen to consider renaming Memorial Drive to Veterans Memorial Drive. So, you know, as you can see from my notes, I, you know, said that we would have to talk to the Board of Selectmen about that. Also, he did mention that there's over 300 vets and families in town. And if it was something that we could turn around quick, he thought if it could be announced at the Memorial Day Parade, that would be great. So, the, you know, I guess before we do anything, I thought I'd get a consensus from, from the board.
I mean, we're going to take the change in name.
The, well, there, you know, we do have to go through the state with that, but I mean, it would be the local traffic authority, which is, is the position that, one of the things that the First Selectmen has. So, it would be the Board of Selectmen saying we wanted to do it, then me going through and getting it done through the local traffic authority. I ran it by, you know, for years Charlie Francis was our engineer and everything. I ran it by Charlie. And he thinks it might be a little cumbersome, but he said, you know, if you could do it, of course, the Board of Selectmen wanted to do it, but so, you know.
We're talking street signs?
Yeah. I was just wondering what the costs would be, just street signs? We have to redo maps? I mean, who else is on that street? Business cards have to be redone?
Well, in this particular case, it's just town buildings.
Right. I mean, the two town buildings mention Memorial Drive as an address and all business cars have to be redone.
Right. So, I can look into that. We can, we can talk about that at the next meeting.
I mean, I'm not against it. I, I think we should honor our veterans.
I'm not against it either. I just want to see the total cost.
Yeah, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's going to be significant, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So, we'll, I'll put that as an action item and under new business at the next meeting.
Yeah.
It's a little bit longer sign.
It'd be a long sign.
Yeah. And it, you know, it certainly is respectful of the folks. So, that's why the request is seriously taken and brought to us. The minutes for March 12.
Here we be in order.
Do I take that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any unanimous? March and carry. Okay, FY 15 budget update. The, at the meeting, two meetings ago, at the Board of Finance, they raised our budget from 1.65% to 2.1%. And it was $19,975, I think was the, excuse me, was the addition. And as we had talked to you in conversations with the Board of Finance, you know, there would be approximately $5,000 would help fix the face of over, have the fire department, about $5,000 could go into data services and $10,000 would go into DPW for the road study that we need so that we can put it together, so that we can start to work a plan.
Yep.
And that's, those are the only changes that happened off of the budget that we had discussed and approved.
Something I'd like to discuss about that is that $10,000 for that road study, I don't know, I seem to think that it's a lot of money for just getting a piece of paper. I mean, we already have a road, you know, road guide. At this point, we just have to update it with what we have. And $10,000, I mean, we can pave a pretty good section of road versus just getting a report. I mean, we know roads need to be paved. So, plenty of, you know, poor condition roads, so.
Well, yeah, but, you know, we need to have a little bit more finite information on it. It doesn't necessarily have to, I wouldn't be looking to spend the whole $10,000.
Right, right.
And certainly, but, but we do need a third-party evaluation that will help us, you know, some of it's measuring and some of it's, you know, looking at the conditions and that sort of stuff. You know, like I said, my intent would not be to spend the $10,000 and whatever money we have would be, you know, money that we could put elsewhere in DPW or into.
Right. Actually, pave road versus give.
But, you know, especially since, you know, this is going to be an ongoing road maintenance plan that we're going to talk to the town about, we need to make sure that from a basis point, we've got good quality information. The information that we have is from 2006, or five or six, six, I think. So, so anyways, certainly understand your, your point about let's spend as little as we can on the report. And certainly, that would be our goal.
And the roads are going to be changing, basically, even while we're in the process of talking to the town about it. They're never getting better on their own.
That is correct. That is correct. I, I would think that eight or nine roads that were good to fear are now fear to poor. And some of the fair roads are down to poor. So, this will help us just finalize.
Speaking of Memorial Drive, is that one that's on the, to come up soon?
That's the town campus.
Yeah, right. I hear people complaining about that entrance all the time.
It's bad.
It's horrendous, yeah.
Well, it wouldn't be anything part of, you know, paving the whole thing, but we certainly could look at.
We could do something about the problem there.
Do 50 feet or something into it. The, well, you know, the, the winter was just unbelievable. And then the frost heaves, I know a lot of the frost heaves have started to.
Come back down.
To settle back. But it is pretty rocky bumpy there. And they've put.
I know, they keep trying to patch it.
And they do.
Every time it rains.
They put glow patch on it. And then, the, I don't know if I've mentioned it before, it's, you know, sometimes people see dirt on top of that and they think that we're just filling them with dirt and we're not. It's cold patch, but the dirt is, you know, preventing, it's sticking to cars and that sort of stuff until it settles. I also included all these edits from last night's meeting, along with detailed information from our staff. They, I've invited the town clerk to join us on April 23rd to answer any remaining questions and discuss the ordinances. So, that's, you don't have a document on that, but I put it on the agenda. Okay, next order of new business is the planning and zoning, along with these greenway folks who are asking, and the Farmington River Watershed are asking us to consider a wild and scenic designation on the Farmington River. It's a little different than the previous Farm, uh, previous, let me start off. The, they're looking for Farmington River and Sam Brook to be nominated as state greenways. And there's some information from Gary on that. Some of our surrounding towns have already done it. And then Gary, in his memo, said, you know, I know that similar programs like Wild and Scenic have met some resistance and with concerns on hydropower and things like that, I can tell you the greenway designation should not inhibit rights for hydropower designation. It's more of a state planning tool to identify and categorize the greenway systems to support potential connections through existing corridors, whether it be Rails Trail, Hiking Trail, or Extreme Corridor. So, the, so I just wanted to give the, the board the information and invite Joyce Kennedy Rames, who works for Farmington Valley Watershed. And she invited her to the 23rd meeting also so that she can explain it to us.
My only concern about this whole thing is, it's like, you've got to consider the landowners' rights along that, that path there. Because once we give control of this to the state, you know, the people have no control over their land. Maybe someone wanted to develop it a little better. I mean, I know there's restrictions there already for anything next to a waterway, but.
That's why, that's why I thought it would be beneficial to have Joyce come and talk to us. And, you know, and John Wop, Chairman of PC, the Planning and Zoning Commission, said to propose Greenway as an area that is actually insufficient of the recreational activities that is important conservation and preservation source. Greenway would, designation would be fully consistent with the town's land regulations and state policies planned for conservation and development. So, the, Joyce, editor, at our next meeting, will come and speak to us about this. Now, if it's at that time when she's just to, to set things up, if at that time, we want to go forward with that designation, it'd be a short turnaround because the application is in May. So, it would be after her, after her presentation to us, it'd be a up or down by us on whether we wanted to do it.
Okay. So, will she be able to tell us what the pros and cons are of it? You know, what, what benefits is that to the town?
Sure.
Yeah, because I was kind of against the other one, so I need to know more about it, you know, for sure.
There's nothing to prevent us from, you know, utilizing the green, you know, utilizing it as a greenway now without state designation. I mean, it's still, still pretty brook. It doesn't change.
Yes. The, and, and some of the benefits would be some, some, you know, from the state, perhaps some state dollars or things like that, or connecting things. And we needed to tell us that. So, when I speak with her, I'll, I'll talk to her about her concern about landowner rights and pros and cons to, of the entire project and what the benefit is to the town. Anything else you want to?
No, I think that's, no, that's.
Okay. All right. The next order of business is Section 179D allocation. I know what that is, is, is back in 2005, Congress enacted a section of the Internal Revenue Code to encourage energy-efficient design and construction of new or rehabilitated properties. It allows taxes of government building owners, and in this case, it's the Seymour School, to allocate a potential Section 179 deduction for energy-efficient building envelope HVAC and water systems or interior lighting systems to taxpayers who worked on those systems for government-owned buildings. And those that would be, you know, federal taxpayers eligible to receive an allocation would include the architect, engineer, contractor, environmental consultant, or energy services provider. In this particular case, there's been a request from Newfield, who was the general contractor, for lack of a better phrase, of, of the project. So, the, if we wanted to do that, that would be something that, that the Board of Selectmen would vote on. In this particular case, it would be any federal income tax deduction available under 179D attributable to, attributable to the building envelope HVAC and water systems and lighting systems to Newfield. And then it mentions that the Seymour project was $9,896,000. So, the, you know, the, it's something that's allowed to, to be done. And, you know, we can't use the tax credits. So, any, any thoughts on that?
All right. I was just, was this calculated into the cost of the school project? I mean, did Newfield calculate that into their bid? Did they expect the tax credit?
No.
That's something.
No, no.
Okay. And would any portion of this tax advantage be shared with the town of East Granby? Or is it just something that strictly goes to them and we don't get any rebate or?
Would strictly go to them.
And you have any idea how much it is?
No, I don't. No, I don't. I don't have a dollar number. It would be, and, you know, and I would think that it would be, you know, the number would fluctuate based on the federal tax return anyways.
Right. I mean, I don't know, is this something that we can ask for, so we can enhance something at the schools? Or like a rebate on a portion of their fee or?
Yeah, the, I, I.
What's your?
I don't, I don't think that's possible.
No.
The, you know, we, it's, it's something that legally we're, we're able to do. And they were a good partner with us. And going forward, we may continue to have a relationship.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I recommend that we would, we would grant them the Section 179D allocation.
Okay. Well, I'll go along with that too, but I would just like to find out how much that would be. How much are they actually gaining by that?
Yeah, okay.
So, maybe next time, if we do use them again, we can.
We can.
Use it as a little bit of leverage.
We can play a little poker.
Yeah.
The, which is fine. I think that's a good idea. Would one of you like to make the motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
To make the allocation.
Yeah, the allocation. I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
March and carry. You handle this. The provision on aging, several months ago, finished up their bylaws. They had been vetted by the town attorney. And they have done, they did a good job of updating them. So, the final step is for us to approve those and make them official bylaws and give them to the town clerk.
I've got one comment on these. It's like, I don't know how critical it is that they get this in right away. I mean, can, maybe we wait until after our town ordinances are changed? Because some of our town ordinance chapters are referenced in here, so we can correct it to reference the new chapters that we're going to have. You know what I mean? Because it's like right here, they're referencing ordinance IX, which we won't have, right? Because they're only going to be newer numbers and all that. I mean, we're going to redo our ordinances within the next couple of months, I'm guessing.
Well, I would think that we'd probably be at a point to make a decision as a Board of Selectmen at our next meeting on the 23rd on the ordinances.
Oh, we'll have to read them all over and have answers and all that, but I'm just, you know.
Well, we're down, we're down to five or six questions, I think, on the ordinances. We've knocked an awful lot off. We've knocked an awful lot off, so...
We're getting there, we're getting there.
Yeah, we've got five or six more to go, so...
But I'm just, you know, saying that this way, they don't have to go back and make any changes to these, you know, maybe we can just wait one more month or two more months. I mean, what do you think? Or should we just let it go, and then, then these need correcting in the near future?
Well, I, what I would suggest is that we go ahead and approve them as is, and knowing, and giving them the heads up that when the ordinances are, are changed, after we get the town meeting, they're just going to need to make...
Is that the only spot that it's on?
Uh, that's just the first one that I saw, I didn't, I didn't, I don't see anywhere else.
That would be an easy thing for them to change.
Yeah, and then there's also other things in there from the ordinances, like the number of members, alternates and all that, and that'll be addressed in the town ordinances too, so...
And that's, and that's...
I guess we have to make sure that they...
And that's consistent with the town.
Right.
These numbers are consistent with the town.
What the town's proposed ordinances?
Proposed ordinances, yeah.
Okay. All right, just so long as, you know, they know that we might have minor changes, but I don't have any problem with approving them the way they are now.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Sure. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Marshall Kerry. Okay, the refunds, there's a couple big ones this time around, there's a couple house taxes, and then there's a motor vehicle.
These actually came with letters of explanation.
Yes, the, the, I, whenever I see the big numbers, I'd like to make sure that I provide you with the, the backup on that. It's not necessarily the run of the mill like we normally have.
All right, I'll make a motion, approve the tax refunds as presented.
Would you like to second those, Tom?
Absolutely.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any others to give?
Okay. Has anybody ever not approved it? I've never heard of it.
No, I mean, because, because it doesn't come to us unless it's...
Right. Yeah, it's been triple checked already.
Yeah, yeah. In most cases, triple checked, because...
Yeah.
The catastrophe expert, the assessor, and then me, and us, and, so... The, several years back, we passed the policy on polling place safety and security, and I gave you a copy of that. Reason why I want to revisit it is because I've gotten a request to, to allow the, you know, so, the parties, if they wanted to put up a awning or a canopy, you know, like at the farmer's market sort of thing, those sort of things, over at the polling area where they normally stand, so...
Outside the seventy-five?
Outside the seventy-five feet on the grass area. I wanted to discuss it, the, I, I'm a little worried about if the canopies are there, are they going to make it a congested area even more congested, and will it block some, some access, some visibility?
I'm worried about the visibility part with the cars, that's, I mean, I don't even like the people standing there, really, because it takes people away from where they're supposed to be, when they're driving.
Well, what...
You can't do anything about that.
What started, what started this, you know, maybe if it was four years ago, Tom, maybe it was, was we had people on both sides of the, of the road, and it was just unsafe. So, certainly, you know, if it's a safety issue or a safety concern, we as a Board of Selectmen can, can say, you know, yes, this is what we want to do, or no, we don't want to do this.
I mean, right now, people bring chairs and things like that, nothing much more.
Right, right.
So...
What do you think, John?
I'm not opposed if it's something that maybe it's on a case by case basis, you look at it, see if it blocks views, as long as it doesn't block a view, doesn't create a safety hazard.
Well, I kind of oppose the idea. I just, I'm not putting up a, a tent, a canopy, I don't know, it just doesn't, doesn't bode well with me, sorry. Hey, you know, if it rains, I'm bringing an umbrella.
Yeah, I'm one hundred percent set on it, so...
Well, the, you know, the, the request is for this Friday.
Oh, okay.
So, the, you know, if we want more time to, to think about it, then we, you know, I can tell the requesting party that, you know, we will look at it, but at this point, we're not comfortable with it, because we're concerned about safety and liability issues. I mean...
I don't think it's going to rain this Friday, anyway.
So, we don't, we don't have to...
I think we're setting a, you know...
Well, it's a precedent.
We allow it once, and then, or, you know, how big are they going to get, and...
Then it's going to happen forever.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, you know, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but, so, is, we, it's not anything we necessarily need to vote on, but I need a consensus, so, I think that...
My consensus is no.
Okay.
All right, we won't do it this time, yet. Maybe look at it in the future.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll make the call. And the, the last thing, we talked about it before, is the ambulance abasements, but I thought I remembered that the last time that we...
Yeah, I think we discussed it last time.
Yeah, and, and the discussion was, we really appreciate the service that we've received from the, the Ambulance Association Board, but that it was not a precedent that we wanted to set.
Correct, and we have so many people that volunteer for different things in town.
Right.
I mean, we, we do it for them, and then I'm going to ask for one. I'm serious, I mean, I volunteer, you know, my time for all these years, and...
And that's the opinion of the town attorney also, that they don't fit the criteria, so...
Okay, so I'll respectfully re, mention, you know, tell them how appreciative we are of what they've done, but that it's not anything that the Board of Selectmen is looking to do. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, and I apologize for not, but it's just, I think it just opens, again, we're opening the door. We're turning the faucet on and letting them...
Well, we had a lot of papers, but we blow through this pretty good, guys. The, is there any other new business to discuss?
Well, I think I...
Did I miss anything?
Well, under public comment, I, under, I'll speak with public comment, I went into the post office, it was clean, it smelled nice, so I actually went to the, the workers and told them how nice it was.
That's great.
And I said it was a pleasure to walk in there and have it smell nice and be clean.
It's been, yeah, it's happened like that, you know, several weeks ago.
Yeah.
Before I went on vacation, it was nice and clean in there.
Good.
Keeping it clean is...
And I've had, I've had a Boy Scout and a service, our high school folks, contact them about doing some beautification over there.
Yeah, well, that's good. Fix maybe straighten that light pole out.
Yeah, there's two light poles, but the one that's on the highway side.
Flowing accidents there, right?
Yeah. Okay, and is there anything else?
I think that was all I had.
Who's, who's going to make it in?
I'll make a motion if they adjourn.
Okay.
I'd like to stay longer, but it's been a long day.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Marshall Kerry, thank you, gentlemen.